Good afternoon, I'm Amy Davis.
So, well, I was going to give a rather longish, protracted and boring introduction, but I've been advised by my colleague not to do that. So, basically, do you have any suggestions?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good point.
We'll have to hear them. I had in mind a rather long, protracted invitation for this session, but I was advised to cut it short. So, our purpose is to invite you into our town hall, where we can experience a culture of inquiry, and where you can get a chance to have dialogue with the other people in this room, and the group we've got across the world, who all are engaged in similar practitioner research that we are involved in. And we can have dialogue on what we're doing, and what matters to us, and hopefully make some connections that we can carry into the future. So, some of us already meet regularly on Sunday mornings on Skype, people in this group, and people up here, or other days in the week, Fridays, and one of the other days you make... many, aren't there? So, Jack, Terry's there, can you get some...
Is there somebody standing?
Yeah. So, these people have been waiting to get on, we've been practicing with them, make sure they can hear us and engage with us. So...
Circle, anybody else?
Yeah, anybody, come into the circle, please come into the circle. So, when we planned this session, we thought maybe we'd break up into small groups, but I don't know how you feel about that, do you still want to go into small groups, or would you like to just...
Basically, could split a few small groups and take the outside group with us?
Yeah. Okay. So, Kathy, do you want to start with a little intro on what you'd like to chat with people about?
Sure. So, I'm Kathy DeVin, and I'm a teacher from Blue Water District School Board, along with a few others in this circle. And Avi's and I have been working together this year on a collaborative inquiry around English language learners. And we have a high population in my school, I teach in an elementary school of second language learners, the Pennsylvania Dutch is the home language of our Lennanite population, and we have quite a few in our board as well. So, we are interested in kind of talking about some of the tensions and issues in facilitation, including sort of honoring the voices of the students, and the teachers working with the students. And I'm going to pass it over to Avi to continue. And I also, I'm a learning resource teacher, but I'm also co-facilitator with some other people in here at the Blue Water Action Research Network. So, it's a voluntary group of teachers investigating our practice in action research.
I'm Avi Stelger, and I'm also with the Blue Water Board of Education. And in this year, I'm in the role of English second language system teacher. So, I get to, it's new to our board, so setting up a support system for English language learners, teachers, and so on in the board, it's been my role this year. What we really were hoping to do, because of our work with collaborative inquiries around the English language learners this year at our school, and another school that I've been involved in, what we were hoping to do today was provide an opportunity just to share stories. And we all have stories. Our particular focus of sharing stories would be around the facilitation process, is what we were looking at, and the facilitation process of that, sort of within the climate of inquiry, if you like. And I love the word climate, because, you know, we're Canadians, for the most part, around here, so we know what climate is all about. It's not paradise, it's not all sunshine in summer, we have rain, we have snow, we have blizzards, and that's the same that happens in the inquiry process. There are barriers that we have to overcome sometimes, you know that roadblock? Can't go through it, gotta go around it, gotta do something, right? So, the climate of inquiry, the facilitation process, through the inquiry process, is something that has concerned Kathy and I as facilitators, so reflective, reflection on our facilitation. In particular, I think, how to engage and sustain that engagement of the members of the inquiry has been one of our concerns. Who benefits? Who is influenced? Who grows in the process of the inquiry? Patience through the inquiry process is something that I'm learning about, this level, I'll percolate and see what comes out at the other end. And there were certainly times when I was really concerned about the process, and that it was not working. And then, in the end, the sunshine, and it looked good. So, that patience to go through that. So, a number of things, but of course, there are other things that are still concerns about how to proceed and how to make it work. Accountability is another big one that I'm concerned about, and how you ensure accountability, or how you encourage accountability, or set it in place, and so on. So, those sorts of things, and we really wanted to hear your stories about that in the group, if there is a group, or the whole group.
Oh, thank you, Jackie. This is really about an invitation to engage, and I answered that invitation about eight months ago. So, I was presenting my research on self-awareness and collaboration, and there were these amazing smiling faces in the audience, and they invited me to join their learning community. And it has been a really exciting experience for me in many, many ways, but what we offer to have a dialogue about today is the kind of relationships that I experienced with people who were, on one hand, virtually strangers, as we all come together, you know, we're all coming from different places and ideas, and how the culture of inquiry supported me, and the authentic relationships that grew. And Liz and I are kind of experimenting here, because we've never met each other face-to-face before today, or yesterday, actually, but we have very sincere learning relationships. We just want to offer a conversation about what that type of relationship means, and Liz can tell you a little bit more about that.
So, I don't know if I can tell you any more than Kelly just told you, because it is an investigation in progress, and we did just meet last night, but I have to say, it was so wonderful, the moment I saw Kelly in 3D, you know? My heart just kind of went, "There she is!" And it was this woman who I had developed a relationship with in cyberspace, you know? And we know the limitations of that, and we know that face-to-face is, you know, the most authentic way to communicate, but we would not be able to talk, or see, or hear from the people that we see up on our screen today without this technology. And part of what we're investigating is, you know, the energy-flowing values that unfold as you develop a trusting relationship in cyberspace. And then, we're looking also at, you know, how does, what does that look like in the classroom, what does that look like in other relationships? Because we don't have some of those barriers, we might have other storms, horrific, for your metaphor, I guess, coming, but, you know, we definitely have the face-to-face. So, and it all comes down to, and I'm not going to say money, comes down to love, as far as we're concerned. And that's a word that we don't often hear when we talk about pedagogy, and documentation, and validation, and triangulation, but we're, you know, thinking that it's key to relationships, whether they're in cyberspace or real time. We hope to discuss that in more detail with you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Crystal Dawn, I'm a secondary teacher also from Blue Water, and had the opportunity to work with a lot of the people in the circle here. I am interested in improving my practice online, and that's how Michelle and I have come to know each other, she's going to tell you a little bit more.
Sure. Well, sorry, first time I think with the microphone for a little while. Yes, I guess I'm a bit new to the barn group, but my name's Michelle, and I'm also with Blue Water. And as a teacher researcher, it's my role to work with teachers like Crystal, and to really, to improve student learning, it's what my fundamental job is. And so, we came together, and, well, do you want to talk with the class?
Sure. So, first semester, I was teaching a science class, as a split-class academic applying in a secondary classroom, so a grade-10 science class, and Michelle joined us to do some research.
Yeah, so, for Crystal and I, it was really important that we honor student voice. The bulk of my job, actually, is collecting student voice through all kinds of different documentation, but, sorry, Liz, I can say about that. Oh, so, and we wanted to honor the student voice, so we invited the grade-10 students to become co-researchers with us, and we let them know what we thought we were seeing in the class, but we wanted to hear what they saw, and what they thought we should end up doing about it. So, we had all sorts of discussions with the students, and eventually, we ended up exploring the question of, what would it look like to have an open and vulnerable classroom, and what the ultimate effect that would be, that would have on student learning?
Yeah, I think that's great, three groups, and so, we'd like you to meet our friends across the globe.
Okay, I'm not sure if you want to speak, but if I just, Swarup, if I just introduce them, then we can see, in terms of the living posters they've produced, how you can access those, so you've got their narratives, in terms of what they're doing, as I say, in different parts of the world, but Swarup, I'm going to try to bring you in, we're going to see if the, let's just see if the sound, can you say something?
Swarup's in here.
Okay, so, the speaker isn't in, let's see if...
Yes, you can take that. She's supposed to mic up there, Jack.
Okay.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Okay. No, try again.
Jack?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you can give me now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's just, it's just to introduce Swarup, just say a little bit about what you're doing.
I, yeah.
Go ahead, Swarup, tell us what you know.
I got your introduction.
We can hear you, actually, go ahead and talk to the group.
This is great fun, I'm so excited to be connecting with everyone. I just hope you all can hear me well, I can see you all really well, the sound is not so clear, but, yeah.
Tell us about your work, Swarup.
Okay, yes, I live in Mumbai, I study in England, but I work in drama and education to enhance life skills in children, and right now, I'm working in the villages of Gujarat, and I'm training primary government school teachers how to use drama and education in the curriculum and in life skill enhancement.
That's great.
So, that's what I'm doing.
Great.
One of the loveliest project I'm doing right now is where I'm teaching two and a half land teachers simultaneously through satellite. So, that is really exciting, because, you know, when you can read so many pictures and try to be effective, that is what I do.
It's lovely, Swarup, stay with us for a group, okay?
Yes.
Bernie, Bernie Sullivan is in Ireland, and Bernie's doctorate is actually in relation to social justice issues. Okay, so, we're going to try and get Bernie to, can you hear? Bernie?
Yes, yes, Jack, can you hear me?
Yeah, very well, could you just introduce your research, Bernie?
My research was based on the living theory approach, and it was on achieving social justice for traveler children who are a minority group in Ireland, very much marginalized, and treated as second-class citizens. So, based on my values around social justice and equality, I wanted to ensure that they received the same entitlements to education as other children. From that, when I finished my PhD, along with three colleagues, Mary Roach-Moore and Katrina McDonough, we wished to continue on as action researchers. We had found the living theory approach to be such a life-enhancing approach that we did not want it to finish when we finished studying. And so, since then, we have been trying to influence other people, telling them the story of our research, and the benefits that we got from it, of how pupils got, and we've had kind of various successes and failures and so on along the way, but recently, we met up with Pip Ferguson, who is now working in DCU in Dublin, and with Pip, we got the idea of forming a network for educational action research in Ireland. And we had the inaugural meeting of that group on the 25th of April, at which there were 24 people, and it was quite successful in the sense that all the people present felt that they need a place for intellectual nourishment, and a safe environment where they could discuss the issues that they had, and where they could get support from us. So, we hope now to move on from there, and we're already planning a second meeting of that group, and we hope that it will be a network to, as a contact for anybody throughout Ireland who has an interest in action research, or who just has an open mind, and wants to adopt a critical approach, rather than just accepting everything that's handed to them. So, is that enough for the moment, like, I don't want to have...
Yeah, no, that's really good, very, thank you.
Very well done, Bernie.
Well, just move the speed then, yeah? Okay. Okay, try this, okay, so, we've got, can Liz and Peter, can you hear? Yeah? Oh, that's great.
Yes.
That's very good, because Peter was Liz's doctoral supervisor in South Africa, the University of Victoria, and Liz's doctorate has been in relation to undergraduate medical education, and bringing a living theory approach there. So, Peter, would you just like, Liz, would you just like to introduce yourselves to the group? Yes?
Yes, I'm Peter Dettori, my field of specialization is high education, so I'm involved in academic staff development, that is my passion, that is my joy, and I have a lot of laughs working with the professors in the class. And at some stage, Liz was one of the academics joining the program, and there is where the relationship started. And, yeah, she can tell you more about our relationship in terms of research supervision, and what it means in terms of reciprocal learning, and, yeah, the supervisor learning from the student.
Hi, everybody, my name is Liz, as you know by now. My living theory was around, you see, the values of agency and care, and including public health in the medical curriculum, because public health is not a welcome inclusion in the medical curriculum, and as Peter said, that's where we started our journey together. We've got other things, things in common, we teach on, and we facilitate learning around action research amongst mostly the healthcare professions, about trying to bring about change in the health system in the broader sense. But on our poster, we decided to not focus either on his work or on my work, but rather on the supervisory relationship between the two of us, and we tried to, in our, in the process, we tried to challenge the notion of supervision being a contractual agreement, and we explored looking at how supervision can be a model agreement. And we used creative methods in this supervision process, and we looked at how we could both learn from one another, so we hope you enjoy the poster. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Liz, and I'll be showing Liz's poster with Peter, you know, in a few minutes, but, yeah, I just want to, Pip, can you hear?
I can.
Okay, so, Pip's in Ireland, and then Sonia, is that's okay, and then Terry, and Delicia, you're there as well, great, so, Liz, Pip, okay?
Hi, everybody, I encountered action research in the 1980s, when I was working as a staff developer in a polytechnic in New Zealand. I decided to do my PhD using action research to help develop a research culture, and in the course of that study in 1994, I visited the UK, where I met Jack. I was introduced to living educational theory at that stage, which, while it didn't permeate my thesis per se, has stayed very much a part of my practice since. I'd just like to pick up a couple of points raised by the lady over to my right, who's probably down from where Jack is, who mentioned the thrill of being able to communicate using technology, and also the issue of love being present in academic environments. And I just wanted to share with you, one of the living educational theory tasks that I perform with great joy is being a peer reviewer for the EJOTS journal, I'm sure Jack and Jackie will tell you about that. And back in the day, I reviewed a paper by a woman called Sarah Salias. Sarah and I stayed in contact, and she said, in response to the review feedback that she got from me and somebody else, that it was the first time she'd ever encountered love operating in an educational and academic context. She and I have just yesterday, never bet, we've just yesterday submitted an abstract for the World Congress, which we've got our fingers crossed will be accepted, and we may get to meet in South Africa.
That's great.
Good, we would like to welcome you here.
I can be back differently, Peter, I've had one accepted already.
If we bring Sonia in now, because Sonia's in the UK, executive director of the Causa Global, is also going to Victoria for the World Congress of Action Learning in the Bank, okay, so everybody should be able to be connected. Sonia, will you just introduce?
Yes, so, as Jack says, I'm in the UK, I'm a doctoral student, and I'm studying, looking, using living theory, and looking from where I've come from as a child in care, through my journey to becoming a chief executive of a carer's charity, and how, through that, I can think about how we can sustain the hope that we can be the change that we want to be in the world. So, my values very much around hope, but also love as well, which has been talked about, and justice and participation. So, those are the things that I'm really trying to look at in my practice, and thinking about, how do I bring that into the work I'm doing as a leader of a charity, but also, how does that influence me throughout my life? So, that's the work I'm doing, I'm hoping to get my paper into Alora, and come and meet everybody in South Africa, which will be very exciting.
Thanks, Sonia. And we've also got Delicia, now, unless Delicia's gone off, no, Delicia, ah, hang on, yeah, okay. Right, Delicia, could you, would you mind, Delicia's also in South Africa, Derby University of Technology. Okay, Delicia, could you?
Hi, Jack, I'm not alone, I'd like to introduce as well with me here is Lee, and Linda Barthes. I've been involved with living theories research, working with Professor John Connolly, who's now retired, and she introduced us to Jack Whitehead and to his work. In about 2009, Jack visited us at Derby University of Technology. I completed my doctorate study in 2013, where I was trying to look at learning, understand the process of learning, and for me, the values of love and joy are the values that come through very strongly in the work that I do. And I am a staff developer, I'm a canon in the church, a reverend canon in the church, and I look at the university, so I do all these things, and what keeps me going is the love and the joy that I have, and that most of my colleagues, they actually die a meter because of the situations that we find ourselves in in the classroom and in our practice, and I find that the love and joy that we can share is very enabling and helps us to cope with the day. We also meet as a group, we have what we call a mentoring practitioner researcher group, that was meeting once a week, and where we share, and that's where Lee and Linda and many others have come together, and we've shared and written abstracts for conferences and things. And I think Sonia, make sure you add the Liverpool Hope.
Liverpool Hope, yeah.
That's right, the Liverpool Hope, that John Walton, at the Symposium, so, yeah, so, through the work that we're doing, we're continuing to do action research and living theories. Actually, a paper of mine, an abstract, has been accepted at the ASSET Conference in New Zealand, where I'm looking at my leadership, and how the love and joy is impacting on leadership and the values that I have, and looking at living theory. So, I want to just maybe hand over to Lee and to Linda to share a bit about their work.
Great, thanks. Lee, could you, and then Linda.
Thanks, thanks. I just want to say that one of the most important things about my study for me was, okay, obviously it was you looking into stuff and what have you in relation to all sorts of things, but it was the word well-being, I think that was Marie's thing, that has been, it was one of my values, one of the most important things for me, because it's such, it's, in the classroom, the learning happens because of well-being, and my other values include creativity and play, but they all lead to the well-being, I think, I don't think that's ever going to change for me. Person will be, student will be, my will be, yeah, it's all about the love.
Yes, thank you, Lee. Linda, would you, please?
I'm Nick Jack, sorry, when I was in East Britain, felt completely lost in terms of the world of academia, because I'm a dance specialist, and I wanted to do my research in dance education, and wanted to power, I could use dance in a multicultural classroom, and enable people from backgrounds that are, say, for instance, we have in our classrooms here, Muslim, Buddhists, Hindus, Christians, all in the same classroom, and a curriculum that allows them to dance, but they don't want to dance, because they don't want to do other people's dances. So, I devised a form of dance as a result of my participation in the group, to try and enable children in a multicultural classroom to be able to dance together, and it's been very successful, and I'm continuing my research, it goes on and on, and it's now getting involved in schools, and so it might lead to further studies and things, but at the moment, I'm in the field.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
I'm still in the field.
Yeah, that's really good, Linda. Linda, explain to me what was over there, that the dancers, like from Spain, should actually protest dances, which I'd never understood before, and in the South African context, it made really good sense. And Terry, could we, as our last speaker, would you like to just introduce your work, Terry?
Oh, we can't hear you, Terry.
Oh, Terry's sound, I think he's got...
I don't hear you either, Terry.
No, your sound's gone, Terry.
I can hear you. Yeah, okay, I had to take my headphone off. Okay, hi, so, I'm in New Hampshire in the United States, and I'm at Antioch University in New England, and I'm working with my students, I'm in the education department, and I have teachers, students who are going to become teachers in the education department, and all of us are, there's a group of us, and I'm facilitating the group, but we're all learning together about living theory, and what we're examining, we're asking ourselves, how can we learn to see students, see our students more fully, and so that we examine the way that we see, and we're looking at our own perceptions, and looking at how, what's our part of this, and so that we can, we can see others more fully, and that other people that we would, it's hard to explain, but it's sort of learning how to be present with others and see them as fully as possible through this examination of how each of us sees, so, and examining our perceptions. And so, that's what we're doing, and we're using the living theory cycle, so we're really excited about it. There are 10 students and me doing that, all doing living theory, so.
Okay, I think we, I think we covered everybody, but it's actually coming through Skype, and that was really exciting to see you all, so thank you, Bernie. And Swarup?
Hi.
Yeah, hi. Who's there? Is that Andy? Oh, great.
Randy! Sounds like a party in.
Can you speak?
I can, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, can you introduce yourself, Andy, because we won't expect you, Andy, who's a socially engaged artist, and he's actually been supporting a lot of practitioners around the area of faith. So, Andy, would you just introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Yes, sure, yes, sure. I'm a socially engaged artist, and have been for a number of years, probably too many really to count, but I've used arts and arts processes to enable... really to count, but I've used arts and arts processes to enable people to engage with changes that they want to make in their own lives and also to deal with changes that they may encounter, external changes. So I sort of combine action research together with a reflective arts practice together, which has now evolved since meeting Jack about twenty years ago into a living educational theory where I sort of live, live the values and I live the art if you like. So along with working with others, I also challenge myself in terms of personal and self-change. I'm a little bit tired over here because I've been up all night with the election and a little bit sad, but as a result, that's another matter. And also my hard drive crashed, so I've managed to get hold of my partner's iPad and set up quickly a Skype call, but I'm here in the background listening.
Yeah, really great Andy, you've managed that.
Please Joe.
We share that doom about our reelection results.
Yeah, I see it as an opportunity to probably reflect and rebuild and
Good.
and just keep, try and keep the hope of it stronger.
I'm just being fair, it's okay. Andy's a hopeful one.
Don't worry, it'll soon change Joe.
It's great. Are you okay as you watch? Okay, and the feeling, I don't know if you feel this, but for me to see Swarup on the screen there, knowing that Swarup is passionate about him helping to improve, and this was the most vulnerable children in terms of the research that she was doing in Mumbai, we're just going through the people that, if you like, have all made public their explanations of their influence. So each person that you see on the screen there has built a unique living theory of their own practice, their own explanation of their influence in their own learning, in the learning of others, and some have taken on the learning of the social formation in which they're in. So that's the idea, if you like, of what each individual's living theory can actually produce. It's your account, it's your explanation, and Liz and Cathy, Jackie, myself, I know Avis, you're working on this and others, have actually generated these narratives, which I want to show you, how you can access them on the web, because quite a number have already got their doctorates. Now, if you think about bringing your embodied knowledge into the academy, in terms of what you know you can do as doctorates or masters, then I want to show you how you can access those, but also, if you would, to access, and you'll see how to do this from my website, Jackie has produced a framing paper, which is going to be given tomorrow as an individual paper, which I'll show you how to access on the web, which is about the living cultures of inquiry, it's about how we generate our own living theories, but also with the pedagogy of being loved and to learn. Okay, so all of this as a survey, how to access. But also please, if you would go into the living posters, that everyone here on this screen's now, and people won't know, we've got three screens working at the moment, all with Skype and you're all on. Yeah, and I'm going to bring up now quite a number of the living posters, and these involve many more people than you see on the Skype process, but I'll show you how you can access Swarup's and the Irish network that we pick, and with Bernie, with Terry's and the others. But are there any questions now? Because if you want to actually depart, you're okay, but otherwise do stay with us, but it's really great that you've been able to connect. A million thanks indeed. Okay Sonia, I'll be bringing yours up as well. Are there any questions that you yourself would like just to put to us before we just go on and show you how to access the living posters? Has it stimulated anything you want to ask or? Yeah? Avis?
I don't know how to quite say this Jack, but I just feel like, you know, the things that we thought we were going to talk about, I would less like to put aside and I personally, I don't know if anybody else feels this way, if you don't just say, but I would like to know more. Okay, this morning...
This morning we had a keynote speaker talking about participatory action research, and I would just like to know a little bit more about the people who we see on the screen or the people here, their journey through living theory action research. I would just like to have more detail about that. You've given us a wee touch of an overview, but I feel like I would like to know a lot more. I don't know if that's possible in this setting, but does that make any sense to anybody else? Does anybody else want to? I mean, participatory action research, I'm a lot more familiar with action research. This particular type, I think it needs examples of people who have been through the process, what they've thought, what they've been doing, really it's their thinking, right? They took them into it maybe in the first place or brought them to that place and what they moved with within it. That's kind of what I'd like to hear. I don't know if anybody else wants to hear that.
Yeah, does that feel okay? Because Sonia, did you hear that?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so just let me plug you in, perhaps you could just respond to Avis. Okay?
I think at the, are you asking for the kind of methodological answer here before I launch into it?
When I ask for a methodological? Not necessarily, but that could be part of, whatever, I guess whatever you want to say that, in terms of anywhere, anywhere along the process. I'm sure the methodology was not the beginning of the process, but of your decision to go...
No, so my process, okay. So my process was, I met Jack and Marie, who's not over there, but her poster's on, and she helped put this together in about 2009. And at that point, the part that really attracted me to living theory was the ability to look at your own story and really think about what was meaningful in that, and where your values come from in terms of where you come from in your history. So I started off from that perspective, not particularly interested in research, has to be said, but I was working with young carers and was very passionate about what I was doing. And so I began there, and Jack started with the idea of writing myself out, is how he puts it. And that was about writing my story of how I came to be doing what I was doing. So about sixty thousand words later, I'd written myself out. Probably the first time I think Jack has ever said, oh, I think that might be a little bit too personal, because Jack is often trying to encourage people to tell their personal stories. So for me, that was a brilliant process and could have stopped there really, it could have just been about my autobiography. But what happened in the process of telling my story was that I recognized that something had led me to be doing what I was doing, and that was my values and the fact that I was very passionate about people, at that point particularly young people and children, being able to have as full a life as possible. But I loved what I did, that I wanted to be, the thing about children being able to live their lives as fully as possible is about opening hope where there are difficult situations that could become hopeless. And that it was about thinking about what was right and just for those children, that they shouldn't be disadvantaged because of their situations. So my values began to emerge and that began to lead me to want to think about my own practice and how what I was doing was influencing not just my own practice, but others, what other people were doing and people that I worked with in these situations. And also, you know, I'm a bit of a, you know, I can save the world type person, so I wanted to think about what influence that was having on wider social formations than just the ones I was involved in, but including those social formations as well. And that really led me to thinking about actually moving into living theory study. You know, I wasn't satisfied with just telling my story, I wanted to think about how that has an impact. So I began doing my master's study, researching my practice, and at that point I moved into leading a carer's centre. And so then I started to use a more, kind of, more action research based processes alongside narrative, so some participatory research, so working alongside the carers that I support, getting them to tell their stories and to really explore what's meaningful to them and how we could improve what their situations were, working together. And also being able to bring in, you know, different types of methodologies. So, you know, the autoethnography became more solidified in my thinking and now I'm really enjoying the process of moving into doctoral study and bringing all of those ideas together, working with research groups to see whether what I'm claiming is right, and I often overclaim, so I have to be careful whether I have any evidence for my claims. And really sort of starting to engage with literature to see whether or not, you know, how does that influence what I'm thinking and develops my work further. So there's all these different elements and that's how I would describe living theory really. I probably missed something, but that's generally it.
Thank you, that's great. Sound good.
Is there anybody else that you're feeling, Avis, was that, you know, that response, is that okay? Do you want to develop?
Sister.
Yes, yeah.
I'd like to say, just one thing that's just standing out to me so much, you know, going back to the keynote, is we're questioning sustainability. And that's what, you know, the questions of sustainability, and that's what I hear that come and thread through all these stories and have experienced myself, it's like, when you tap into your own potential and when you have that sort of support, then your inquiry becomes sustainable from self. So, you know, you hear terms of love, you hear terms of passion, you hear this zest, and that's a never-ending source, and it's unique for everyone, but I think part of living theory is trusting that within yourself. And that creates a real deep sustainable commitment. We always talk in our society how busy we are, how we use a deficit model of thinking about our time and thinking about ourself, and even just sitting here, you know, learning to sit with people and listen to them and to take enjoyment of it, because that's part of your learning process, I mean, that is learning. It's really fulfilling and filling. So I just, I heard that so many times, I thought, yeah, that really speaks to the methodology.
I would just like to add to what Sonia said. Hi Sonia. The reason I was attracted to using living educational theory, as it was introduced to me by Jackie via Jack, was that it was the first time in my life, so in forty-odd years, close to fifty years of educational experiences, that I saw a place for my own voice. I never, I never, you know, was able to recognize my voice in the literature that I was reading for, you know, pedagogy for education, nor did I see it in the literature that I was using in the classroom with my students. And I always felt a little bit like an outsider. I decided to do my master's degree because I was already doing a lot of reading and learning and I thought, like many people, I need this structure to force me to write and, you know, so I went into, but I thought, you know what, I'll just take a course and see how it goes and, you know, and if I don't like it, I can leave, because I, you know, sort of rebelled against the traditional academic way of doing things. But what living theory gave me was the freedom to exercise my own voice, to unveil my embodied knowledge, to identify values that I wasn't even aware of, that I was very, very passionate about. I took those for granted, I thought, well, aren't all teachers passionate about inclusive education? No, not necessarily. Aren't all, you know, so all these things that we assume or take for granted, it gave me an opportunity, like Sonia said, to story myself out. Jackie wasn't quite as hard on us as Jack, she let us tell personal tales and publish them, and I'm not sure how I feel about that today. But it has been an opportunity to grow and learn from myself, within myself. But then also, a big part of it was, you know, the collaborative piece. So Cathy and I became quite close through, you know, developing our living educational theories and validating and being critical friends for one another, as we did with other people as well, especially Cathy influenced me a lot to embrace my vulnerability and tell my story publicly, and then when you tell that story, you can move beyond it. Until that point in my life, I lived with a bit of fear and guilt and shame because of those stories that were oppressed. But once those stories come out, then I can live more fully. When I can live more fully and love more fully, then that relationship exists in the classroom and so can my students and so can my friends and so can my colleagues, and it becomes so reciprocal and so beautiful. And there's a bit of mystery to it, so thank you for asking the question Avis, because it's so unique for each person, the best way to understand it is to live it a little bit, to try it, and then, you know, see if you get hope like the rest of us. I'm hearing in your questions partly, Avis, is, you know, if you were going to be doing action research, what actually was you be doing? And I think for me, when I started, I was in a classroom where I was new to the board and so I was bopping around from school to school trying to get it permanent, and I ended up in a class that was thrown together with three different, overflowed from three different classrooms, and I was struggling to make connections with students because I knew that their connection to me was really important. And yet I felt there were barriers that I had up in terms of making that connection. So my master's thesis was about examining, why is it that I'm not connecting to my students and what could I do about it? And it was a continual action reflection cycle of trying some things and seeing how it worked. But out of that came my values of trust, authenticity and love, which is the willingness to extend myself for someone else's growth. And so I was able to say, you know, at the end, I created video clips for each of my claims to know, that kind of showed where I went on my journey and some evidence of what I was putting forth, of evidence of my values of trust, authenticity and love. Does that make sense? So do you have a self-study action research plus the... Yeah, so it is a self-study. I'm studying myself, I'm saying, going in action reflection cycle, studying who I am, what I believe, and am I actually acting according to those beliefs? It's, you know, a question about myself, but certainly I'm influencing others and I'm measuring that influence I'm having on others. Okay.
Just so when it's okay for me to get on to the living posters, you know, I'm okay, Avis, you know, the responsiveness of everybody here is what really matters to us. And we also want to bring in just of these, the narratives, the resources where you can access them, and then hopefully generate your own living posters and we can actually extend what you'll see on the web. So we keep it as a living process where we're actually developing, extending deeply the connectivity between us. Okay?
Avis, do you have more questions?
I always have questions. But let's move on.
Well, I just wonder if you have questions, others might as well.
I, you know, I can relate here.
I'm reflecting on everything that's being said here, every word. I've spent a lot of my career as a facilitator of action research, so I was looking forward to, I under-stopped, you were going to talk about, you know, some of the challenges and success of facilitation, I'm not sure if we'll get to that now. And that's fine, that's fine, it's nice to have an emergent agenda too when you're in a town hall. I've been a facilitator of action research, an advocate of action research, and I guess working with K to twelve teachers for most of my career. I'm not sure if I've actually gone through the process that you've talked about, that intensive introspection about who I am, what my values are, as a teacher educator. I think I've done it to some degree, but I'm not sure I've done it to the extent that you're doing it in, through living theory, right? And I don't think my, the teachers that Keith and I, Keith is in our doctoral program, and I'm not sure that our teachers go through that in-depth introspection. They do examine their beliefs in relation to the practice. They do examine their beliefs in relation to the practice, they do a lot more, but I'm still, I would have to grapple with, like you, understanding to what extent you do that, and how much of your own beliefs in your own life you bring in. I mean, I do believe you don't separate the personal and professional, I certainly believe that. Well, you try, but I don't think you can do that, right? So mine has been a lot of support, facilitation, of teachers engaged in action research, very , an approach that's very teacher-driven. While I might go in and say, okay, this has to be about STEM education, which we'll talk about tomorrow, you decide what you want to do, and, you know, we can work with you as partners to support that. So that's our approach. So I guess I'm grappling a little bit with it as well, as perhaps you are.
Do you get a sense, after working with teachers on this process, that they have made, like going back to that term, start with?
Do you get a sense, after working with those teachers, going back to that term sustainability? Do you feel, or do they reflect on what their next steps and how they want to?
Yeah, one of the reasons I'm such an advocate, even though formally there might not be the, you know, the actual supports in place through the district to do this, this is long-lasting. What they have learned, the sustainability is built into who they are and in what they believe. They do not look at teaching in the same way. It's inevitable. Every single teacher I've worked with over the years, and I've worked with quite a few, right? They totally change the way they look at children and themselves. That's, I guess, why I'm such an advocate. Keith, did you want to add anything?
Just due invitation.
Just say if we're okay to go on to the posters, because... Really, not that I'm desperate.
How many people want to see the posters?
Good, good, good. Avis? Look, what I've, again, everybody here is on the Skype, and also, I'll show you...
Just want to take you out of your despair.
Yes.
Do I need you?
Yes, do I need you?
I'm front class.
I know, oh, do I need you? But here you can see, and I'll show you how to access these, but Liz, in relation to her doctorate in terms of that living theory of undergraduate medical education, supported by Peter, and the poster, this is the living poster here, and I'll show you how to access it.
So remember this has to do with public health and community health, and the difficulties that she had getting that in place.
Okay. Now, each of the people here, Saru, Terry, and everybody else, has got living poster. Now, how to access this? I'll just show you how, by going into actionresearch.net, you can click on the URL on the right, and all of these come up. And all of these links are live, and at the top here, we have got the networks of people, like we've got the Action Research Network in relation to Ireland, you've got University of Cumbria, Conversation Cafe, EJOTS, Educational Journal of Living Theories, but this one is a very, it's really quite exceptional, because this one is a friend of mine, Peter Mellett, and it was really tragic that his son died at the age of thirty-six, this is about eighteen months ago, well, it's only a year ago, actually. But his son was an amazing international guy in terms of ecology and permaculture, and Peter has been stimulated to produce this amazing website, which is linked up with ecology and the ecological movement in Portugal, and also in different parts of the world. And this website, as I say, if you get into it, I think you'll just be inspired in terms of the values and what's going on, in terms of issues to do with social justice, but linked in with environmental issues. But each one here, you see there, these are, one, as I say, you can just click on, get into, and then you can actually bring them up. These living theory networks, so each below here are just the individuals, Sonia's, so on sustainable leadership. And you can just click on any of those, and as I say, they will come up, and here's Sonia's, you can click on any of the links, and it'll take you into some of Sonia's writings, you can do this with Terry, and Peter, Liz, and others. Are you okay with this? Because this was really important for today, to just make sure that you could see the connections, that each one of these links in to other connections. So people in EJOTS, that's the Educational Journal of Living Theories, link in with Conversation Cafe on a Friday, Barn with Kathy, Liz, Kelly, Melissa, Jackie, they're all linking in, in networks of relationships and sharing their accounts, which we would just call living theories, because they're just each individual's unique explanation of influence. And what I've got, as I say, I just wanted to make sure that if you like, you know how you can actually access those in terms of the actionresearch.net, because all of this resource, which is available, comes from here, which is just the action research website on the right, you get into it in the What's New section, Educational Journal of Living Theories. Can I just ask, how many of you accessed this already? Yeah, quite a few of you. Yeah, because, as I said, this is where all the narratives of, from nineteen, two thousand and eight, when the first issue came out, you can just access it like that, you can actually go into the homepage, the different archives, so you can access everybody's living theory. Now, I just want to check, if you like, I've been clear about how you can access the living posters, going to What's New, Educational Journal of Living Theories, living posters there, you just click on that, you've got access to everybody's living poster from around the world, and the participants today, like with Ireland, with Bernie, you can just feel, I hope, like with Linda, the dance, the difference of people with their inquiries, and you could contribute yours to this growing network, if you would. But it's just, for me, a very exciting network, where the energy, I'm actually feeling hopeful as I'm speaking after the gloom of last night. Yes, you did, Anna, yes, thank you. Right, is that, I just, as I say, I just wanted to make sure that I've been clear about how to access just that, because Jackie's positioning paper is actually accessible from the same place, it's just underneath the posters. So you just go on there, and then you go on to Jackie's, you can access that, and this is the additional one, again for tomorrow, but it was the framing piece for us, in terms of that idea of the pedagogy of loving into learning and living culture of inquiry, which is what Kathy and Liz have actually attested to, I think, Avis, you're a part of the group now, Melissa, you know, Kelly, you know, but it's that energy with the values, I hope you feel that, as I'm expressing them now, you know, that I'm actually feeling very hopeful because you're here. And what I think is happening is that I'm expressing the values of what it is to live a worthwhile life in education. If I tried to put it on paper, just think how difficult I would find it, just on an academic text, to communicate the passion that you're actually evoking in me, you know, it's your relational dynamic with me now that is enabling me to be in touch with what really matters, with an energy that I think we can pool, and that comes out of Sonia Hutchinson, when she was in her teens, has got a lovely image of people just talking, and bubbles coming out with this sharing of the energy that really matters to us. So I'll just pause there, because as I say, we've got just a few minutes left. I was desperate to get that in, okay? Whether you wanted it or not. Are you okay? Now, just in terms of any other responses that you feel you might like to make, that would help to take this home, right? Okay?
Want to make a comment?
Oh, I think the challenges of facilitating has come up a couple times.
I think a number of people have mentioned the challenges of facilitating action research, whether it's facilitating a group of action researchers, or facilitating yourself, participatory action research. I think that might be something even we could talk about as a large group without breaking into small groups, but just if people could identify some of the challenges that they have with that.
This year is my first year...
Your name is?
My name is Brad Clark, I'm a grade seven, eight teacher at Blue Arches School Board, which is, it's Graham Burrows County, Georgian Bay, and Lake Huron, for those who are not familiar with Ontario.
It's not over yet.
No. So, yeah, exactly. But this is my first year as a facilitator, my third year being really part of some sort of action research. As a facilitator, the biggest challenge I had was to think that I actually had something of value to share. I sat, one of the more, somewhat recent meetings, I just sort of sat there, didn't really move, and I felt like I was letting everybody down, and it wasn't until something to, she had, I remember her, from the very first time we met this year, saying, responding to something that I had said, and, oh, we kind of connected just in that way, and then she came to me that, later that day, where I was just sort of sitting there, and she came, and we started talking, and at the end of it all, it became, it was a really great conversation, a two-way conversation, it worked well anyway. And I went home that night thinking, wow, maybe I do have something out there. And so that, getting over the idea that, you know, it's probably a sort of part of our Western culture to not really have, be willing to think highly of oneself, so then just to think that maybe, like I said, that, wow, I do have something.
I'd like to just follow up on that, because, in two ways. Yeah, I think the role of facilitator, my understanding of it, has changed a lot. I remember one of my first times, I've been in various leadership roles for the last probably fifteen years within schools, and I remember coming to a staff and being met with, who the, may put you in charge of doing this, sort of thing, and kind of feeling like, the response of teachers to facilitators or to PD offers was that you're coming in here to deliver something to me, to tell me what to do. And it's taken me a long time to change, or to figure out, how to become a facilitator rather than a deliverer of PD, right? And I think the process of self-study has given me a way to really, in action research, to actually monitor how I'm doing in that, and to say, this is what I value in the process, this is what I like out of it, are we getting there? And it's changed even from that of looking at myself to becoming a facilitator that is not, not trying to figure out how to navigate the boat while the students or the people I'm working with really steer, but rather to construct a boat, invite people onto it, and allow them to steer themselves. And it's through the living, well, action research, living theory process that I've been able to focus on I, and also honor the other I's around me, and to really try and help facilitate that their voices coming out. And I think that's a big difference, and I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on this.
Jeff, I'd like to share something about some of the challenges that we experience...
Good.
...as well, in doing action research.
Please, yeah.
For me, part of the challenge was, there is so much data that we collect about ourselves that to mine the data for evidence of your values and beliefs, and quite often, that's a challenge, because you've just got so much data on yourself, you know, on your practice, and what you do, and now if you're looking at improving this practice, you need to be able to identify the correct, the evidence that is, that you need for your influence, the evidence of your values, the evidence of your beliefs, and I think, for me, that was part of the challenge, because just too much data, and looking for the real gems that will really say what it is you want. The second thing for me is, in doing the self-study, living theory, action research, is the vulnerability that's associated with that. I think, as Sonia shared as well, telling your own story, and sometimes, as you're telling your own story, you are opening yourself up, and this is the role of the critical friends, I think is important, because we, in the Mentoring Practical Research Group that we have, I think those critical friends being there to just really say, hang on, these claims that you're making, are they really there? Or sometimes the critical friends actually saying, but hang on, you did this, and you did that, and here's evidence of this, why aren't you reporting this? And you're like, okay, is that important? Yes, it is important, and the critical friends are there to do that. And the third thing that I wanted to say about, about doing this kind of research is, is that at times, the challenge I faced as well was, your time that you take undertaking this research is also long, because sometimes you've got to deal with things in your life that come up. And if you don't deal with them, your research process is delayed, you know, because you sort of get stuck, and you get blocked, and nothing comes further, whereas, once you've dealt with those issues, let me say, in your life, then you are able to find that you're liberated and you can move on. So for me, those are just some of the challenges, is that sometimes as you dig deep in trying to improve your practice, you find things in your practice, and sometimes you don't want to go there, but sometimes, so you have actually been there, dealt with those issues, then can you only go on and do it in your practice. So that, for me, is just some of the challenges I face.
Thanks, Delicia.
That was good.
Any others?
Could I contribute to that?
Yeah, please.
I've just submitted a paper to EJOTS, which is coming out in the June issue, and exactly the issues that Delicia has just mentioned were raised by my reviewers, and I've been doing living educational theory for a long time. So when you see that paper come out, and it's called Who Am I Who Teaches? It's kind of a long-term analysis of who I am as a teacher, and the values that have motivated my practice, exactly what Delicia says was picked up by my reviewers, so the second iteration has had to address those.
Thanks, Beth. Any others?
I was going to just say, Jackie, I'm making a point as well.
Good.
As a dancer, I took to living theory like a duck to water, because dancers are constantly reflecting on their practice, and constantly trying to improve it, and constantly very self-aware, and very in touch with who they are and how they are feeling. But what I found revolutionary for me in living theory was the fact that I knew very little, understood very little of my influence as a teacher, and I go into the world with my very clear understanding of my personal being, but how do I assess my influence in the wider sphere, and the, and in the world, actually, not only in the classroom? And that, for me, was revolutionary, because it changed how I felt, I moved from somebody who was only concerned about her own practice as a dancer, to understanding how can I influence other people to experience what I've had? And that generated my, my revolutionary change, if you like, and being aware of my influence on others, and then making their lives more aware, and making them live more fulfilled lives through self-reflection and improvement.
That's great, thanks, Linda. And what, it's linked to this, so could I just bring Jackie in, because we haven't got long. Thanks. Oh, somebody else, go on, Saru, go on, oh, hang on, we'll just try to get the speaker on, Saru, hold your minute, I'd like Jackie then, after this, just to say something about systemic influence, because she really did engage with system, yeah?
I wanted to make two points, one about action research, and one about the living theory. What I really adore about the action research thing is that it's democratic and it's dialectical. So everybody's point of view is taken into consideration. Without that, action research doesn't really work. When we're talking about the data, we have to have to have it from all sides, and that is what we talk about improving, when we're talking about improving the practice, is like, especially us, when we're in teaching, it's not only about what we do, but how we get our message through and how we teach. So, you know, I may think I'm the best teacher on earth, but am I really being effective? That is the point. And that's where this democracy, you know, the dialectical, the dialogue comes in. And what I really, really like about the living educational theory, and it really helped me, is it helps me keep my values in order. And the best thing is, it doesn't, when I, you know, when I was taping the video, one of my videos, I said it doesn't crucify you, what I meant is, it gives you a chance to improve, and that is very important. So these are the two points I'd like to make.
Yes, very thanks, Saru. And Swarup's mentioned the videos, because the living posters have got the brief videos on as well, to actually introduce themselves, yeah, to everyone. And what I'd like to do, because we'll then have to finish up here, but it's just that Jackie has been working systematically, so the question about how do you facilitate? It feels to me that, at some point, many of us will really recognize that we really need to influence on a systemic level, to actually influence what's happening in our own site. So Jackie, would you mind, just saying a little bit about that?
I'm always a little cautious about saying, you know, this is how it's done, because every situation is so individual. I would say persistence and tenacity is a big piece. When I was supporting action research in my school board, and I had budgets, I was superintendent of schools, and I drew on budgets to help action researchers get support, have time, have resources, be able to go to conferences to present. So it wasn't a misuse of funds, but you might have called it a creative use of funds. And when I didn't have access to the kinds of budgets that I could tap into, then we just found ways to do it on shoestrings. I mean, if you're really passionate about making things work, and frankly, it wasn't always part of my job, it was something that I believed in, you know, so deeply, that I put time into it, even if it was in addition to the other things that had to get done. So if you have a passion for something, you find ways. I mean, it's just something that has to get done, and people need your help, and, you know, you turn cartwheels and turn over rocks to do it. But teachers need time, they need support, they need environments where it's safe to be vulnerable, you know, where they feel like their voices are heard. And facilitation is about helping people, you know, do the things they want and need to do. And it's big, big on relationships, because it's not just you helping others, it's them helping each other, because that's what happens. It becomes a culture of inquiry, it becomes, it becomes a place where you know your love, and that helps them do it.
Just asking one thing.
Yeah, please, please.
The work, talking about obstacles, the work is exhausting. It's intensive, it's exhausting, but it's the best investment I've ever made or experienced in my educational career, because, like a couple people have said, you have, life doesn't stop because you do, you create your living educational theory, it does get easier. Because now, when I have a difficult decision to make, or I just, yeah, check my values, how does this align with my values? Should I do this, shouldn't I do it, how should I get involved? From a simple interaction, you know, with a student, to should I go to this conference, should I finish my PhD, or just, you know, have fun with my grandbabies? It's my values that guide my life.
Okay.
Sort of one more thing, and that is, that the leaders have to be engaged. So when I work with teachers, I always look to the principals. That's, if you're going to create a culture, the leaders have to do it. It can't be some, oh, yeah, you go do it, and, you know, I'll be supportive. It won't work. Try and change a system, change the system, every position.
Could I just ask, if we're okay, in terms of anything that you're feeling, that you'd just like to ask now? Because I'd just like to thank the people that have actually come from different parts of the world, because like with Pip and Sonya, we've got Delicia, you know, there's Peter and Liz, we've got Bernie, and also Swarup. And Andy managed to come in as well, in terms of...
Jackie, Jack?
Yeah?
Jack, can I ask a question?
No, go on. Yeah, go on, attempt.
Do you have the proceedings on video?
Yes.
Can you be able to share them with us? Because there may be some points that people have made that we haven't been able to pick up on because of the technology.
Yeah.
Maybe able to answer them?
We certainly managed, I think, to get most of it, in terms of...
Yes, we're hoping that we picked up most of it, yes.
Yeah?
We couldn't hear the participants there, we could hear everybody on Skype very clearly, and we could hear Jackie at times, and Jack, but the other participants, it was very hard.
It was very hard to hear, right? Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Okay.
Yeah, they were too far away from wherever you were.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks for that feedback, we'll probably do a better job the next time.
We can see on the video, and perhaps we can contribute towards the discussion in that way afterwards.
If we take that point of, is that our aim was to create something which was literally living? Okay, so this idea that, those posters I've shown you, if you'll get into them, that, if you like, archive, can grow and develop with your own contributions, but also, the ones that are there can actually be amended as life goes on, and we share a deepening and more extensive understanding of what we're doing. So I don't know if it, this Skype has shifted my perception of relationships, because with multiple Skype, I've been able to see Liz, Kathy, Jackie, Melissa, others, Kelly, all at the same time. Okay, so I'm no longer just looking with Avis. Like, when Avis comes on the Skype, I can actually see a totally different set of relationships. And it's like today, when people are coming into our space, you know, from different parts of the world, Linda, there's an obvious work on dance in South Africa. And Linda, when you see those expressions of the value, of the emotion through dance, you know, again, it's extended my perception. So I do hope you'll take this invitation and connect in there, but also then, bring your own living posters into that forum. Is there anything else, Jackie, are you okay to finish? Right. Are we okay, Ed? Many, many thanks indeed for coming, you know, it's been a pleasure, so thanks. Bye-bye, bye-bye. Okay, bye-bye, bye-bye, yes, bye-bye, guys.